So we'll call the meeting to order at 7:05. And we do have a quorum. We have one, two, three members of the five-member board. Kurt will not be able to attend tonight, but I had a conversation with him this afternoon. So moving through the agenda, number one is changes to the agenda. And I apologize for anybody, apologies to anybody who under 3D, there was something for the zoning administrator. There was nothing for the zoning administrator this month. So there were no reports. Apparently on one agenda, it said that there were four, and to look at a website, and that was an error left over from last month. And that's the only change I have. Any other changes?
I have none.
Okay. Approve the minutes of 7:11, 23 minute meeting. What do we have for changes to that meeting?
Kathy?
Yes?
There is a meeting, a little more clarification on some notes regarding plot 16, Wendy North and Tyson Road. And the issue is that the notes need to note that there was a permit given in 2006 for that property, and then a building permit was given upon a house site where there are wetlands. I'm not sure if wetlands were indicated in that.
Initial permit?
Yeah. Or the second one. I don't know how to verse that, but I think that's something that Kurt had to speak up about.
Okay, I think he mentioned that in a conversation with me also. Plot 16 received a house permit that was not shown on the original plan. So apparently the 2006 permit showed no pond and no building. And I guess now, I don't know if there has been a new plan for Ritz Hill or if the people are still trying to use the 2006 plan. It's sort of in the weeds. And I guess we could, I don't think Bob Allen is on. I guess we could refer it back to Bob and see what we do when there is a change. If the initial permit had no house, no pond, and that was approved, and now it is 2023, so it's a lot of years past, and all of a sudden there's a house and a pond on that same lot number.
Well, this again points out the need for a process where there are historical data, natural resource data, and a number of other things which a lot of other towns require on a building permit. So that even if there's a need for a geophysical assessment on a site, or some things that we need to know, then it just points out our efforts to upgrade the permit process.
Yeah.
If you have wetlands, don't you have to get state approval?
At 250?
Do.
One would hope. And that's something that Kurt has been, in case you haven't been following, Kurt has been pushing for that for a number of months, just to tell people when they come in with a permit that the building permit that's okayed must be compliant with all of the state regulations to include that. And he seems to feel, and I think it would be a whole lot easier, if on the permit there was a checklist of things that you need to do before you submit the permit. And it just gives you a guide of the other things. You just can't say, "Oh, I got my permit," and go ahead and...
Just like a worksheet?
Exactly. And I think that would help a lot of people. I understand you've done a lot of it, so you probably are familiar with it. I think most people are not all that familiar with the whole process of things. And they may be under the assumption that once you get this, for instance, in this case, in 2006, where there was no house, no pond, and then, you know, almost 20 years later, they come back and all of a sudden they want a house and a pond, and maybe not understanding that you just can't do that without going through a whole mess of other steps.
And request the agencies.
So I guess, and I think at one point, Robert Allen said that he would like to see the checklist, and I guess we were going to look into it and compare it with what Weathersfield has, just to have those things on the application for the permit. And I guess that's something we could...
To make it more helpful to the applicants.
Yeah, yeah. And that's something I guess we can look at. And I know I said that I would be looking into it, and then got sidetracked with floods and everything else. So I will get back on that.
So how do we want to clarify the change for the minutes?
I don't know how he wants to change the minutes. Kurt spoke, has extensive wetlands, we don't... Kevin, do you have any verbiage for exactly what Kevin wanted? It says that he feels that a permit should not be granted until other permits are in place, and that's what he wants. And he wants to make sure that the applicants know the things that are going to be needed before a permit can be granted. And it's not that the permit can be granted before the actual construction can be granted. And just that adding a checklist would be helpful, and we understand that. And I think he just wanted to call that to our attention, huh? I think it was the difference in all the years.
Yeah, I think the difference was the years that he mentioned, but I'm not sure if it's in the notes, so...
Yeah, I don't see where we can change, the need for changing the minutes, though, because I don't see anything in here that can change.
Okay. On that then, Kathy?
The 2006 permit is done, because you can't extend a permit that long, so...
Oh, there was a dead end for that permit?
Absolutely.
Permit's valid for one year.
Oh, no kidding?
And then you can ask for an extension.
Then why is this a thing?
It shouldn't be a thing.
No, it shouldn't be a thing at all.
So this is how it goes. You get a permit, it's good for one year. You can ask for an extension, and the zoning administration can extend it one more year. And then they review it. If no significant progress has been made, then the permit expires.
So this is a moot point?
Right.
Okay.
I don't think it's a moot point. I think we need the historical data, and the state needs to know the historical data of the plot itself. Now, if we had good records, we would be able to see what intent a lot of people had. And to say that the state is doing a good job all the time, I'm not so sure that's always the case, because many of these are desktop surveys. Sometimes they never set foot on a site.
Okay, but Kevin, they're talking about something that was done in 2006, so it's not...
Now, there is statute of limitations.
Yeah. So...
Okay. So let's leave the notes as they were. I'm sorry to take up that much time.
No, no, it was a good point, because what we, I think everybody is in agreement that the checklist might be a good thing.
There's no, there's no mine about it.
Okay. And that's on me, so I'll work on that for next month.
So who's approving the minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes? I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make a motion.
Key number three, mail and email. I have received none. Planning, regional planning commission, we hired a new highway guy, but I'm not, I don't have his name at this time.
That's who you were asking about?
Yeah.
Okay, I thought you meant Reading there, or something. Logan?
Logan.
What's his last name? Well, his first name is Logan.
Logan, yeah, yeah.
Nickel is his last name, Nick. N-I-C-O-L-O.
And we have one more vacancy to fill. And I guess they are working on that. Energy Board?
Yes. I want everybody to know, and the whole town to know, that there will be an energy fair on the 16th of September. And there will be a barbecue there. Big fatties from White River Junction will be there. And if you participate in any of the energy activities, such as riding an e-bike, or riding in an electrical vehicle, or using a lawnmower that is electrified, or any other events and contests, then you will get a ticket for a free barbecue.
What's the date again, Kevin? September?
16th.
Saturday?
From 12 to 3.
12 to 3, and is that a Saturday?
Yeah, that is, and it's at the town hall. Parking may be an issue we need to address. So there are posters that are already made, and they will be going up. And the school will be involved, the elementary school, perhaps making solar ovens. Another activity, of course, would be panel discussions on how some residents in town have improved their energy footprint, so to speak. And I really hope we get a big turnout. The second thing would be the solar panels that are going up on the fire and rescue property. And that's moving forward. Many thanks to Bill Newcomb, and especially Brian Gally, on getting Catamount Solar to come for a site visit. That would be, I think, either the 23rd of August or maybe, let's see, the 14th? I can't recall. They would be coming down, and we'll go over some of the logistics, site evaluation and so forth. A site evaluation will also be done with Brian Gally, so that he has, you know, the, actually, the reins on the whole project, so that we're all in concert. Now, I must say, that property there, where the panels are going, is one of the highest points in the field, so flooding would be much less of an issue than some people think. And on that note, that whole property needs a management plan of some sort. I don't know if any of you have walked on it after the high waters, but it's a very valuable soil there. It's a community garden. And of course, community gardens mean that we're not shipping a lot of food from other parts of the world. And hopefully, we can encourage people to, you know, use that property a little more. The other issue on the Energy Board, of course, is building envelopes, and we will continue with doing house ceiling. There are a couple of people who will be engaged in that, and that would probably happen after the energy fair work is done. Are there any questions?
No, Ross, that was pretty good to me. Zoning Administrator, there was no reports, and ZBA was no reports. That brings us to Martha.
Okay.
I can see that, I don't know.
I can see that. I don't know. Yeah, there you go.
Okay, I'm using this list because it was the one that Steve was using, so I thought I wouldn't go too far afield right off the bat. So the first thing on the list is something that's been discussed and read on and done. The second thing was about two-family dwellings and allowing them in all residential districts. And I realize that the town didn't want to go ahead with this, but Act 47 was passed, and it requires it. So it's kind of out of the hands of this. Along with that, I now got, I have to change my screen.
In all the zones, correct?
All residential zones, yes.
So it's not "should we," it's "we will"?
Yes.
Yes. No choice. So related to that, I just wanted, they also, the state also put out a new definition for them. They're calling it duplex, but two families, same thing. A residential building that has two dwelling units in the same building, and neither unit is an accessory dwelling unit. And when I look at that compared to Reading's current definition, which is up there, "A dwelling unit with independent living quarters for two families. Both living quarters shall have primary ground floor access to the outside and be attached to each other by party walls without openings." And kind of going beyond what's necessary? I didn't know if anyone might know the history of that, why, why that's included, and what exactly it means also. It kind of sounds to me like you only allow duplexes if they're side by side and not one above the other? So that's one of my questions, is what exactly does that mean? And is it necessary to keep that? Or could we just go with the state's definition?
I think we should go with the state's definition.
Yeah.
That sounds like a plan.
Do we see this, do you have the state's definition here, or no?
It's on the screen, or was on the screen. "It's a residential building that has two dwelling units in the same building, and neither unit is an accessory dwelling unit." So if that's okay, we can always come back to it in the future. You've got another year and a half to work on this. So if something comes up and someone says, "Oh, we did this for this reason," then...
I can convert it into a reason why it was...
Add it back. And I have the same question about the multi-unit dwelling. The state's new definition is "A building that contains three or more dwelling units in the same building."
I have to leave to get some bread out of the oven. I'll be right back.
Ray, do you know anything about that? Why those current definitions are in place? Do you have any recollection?
I don't know for sure. All I know is that typically, a duplex is a single-story, but I'm not sure if that's a requirement. But, you know, the firewall in between them and everything else, I don't know how you possibly do that.
So you'd have to put a, yeah, you'd have to put a fire floor.
I mean, any rental is considered a public building and has some fire safety requirements, so...
Exactly.
I think that would cover it.
Yeah.
But does a duplex necessarily have to be a rental? Couldn't it be co-ownership? Could be like a condo.
That's true. Yeah.
And in terms of the connection between the two units, if we just go with the state's definition, then that single family that's converted to a duplex could quite possibly be converted back to a single family if there is some sort of, there is some sort of, you know, opening. Generally, these are like fire-witted doors that are very heavy, but that technically can connect the two units together.
And with a duplex and the connection between the two individuals, why is that two separate?
Yeah.
Well, there will be the two entrances, but there could be, there could be a fire door that could connect the two units in the event that you needed to... I know firsthand other buildings that are like that, that can allow, you know, another egress, or if it becomes a single family again, it's an easy conversion.
Right.
I think that would be a question for the Fire Safety Department.
Right, you know, maybe just add language that says "Any multi-unit building, duplex or multi..."
Must comply.
Has to comply with fire safety standards.
Yeah.
Can you minimize that? Can you get that away? No? Maybe not? All right, it's okay.
There it is, that one up there, that minimized there?
Yeah, whatever.
I don't, yeah, if I can, I don't know.
Is there anybody else in this class who's interested in this?
I have a question. Martha, are you going through parts of... No, wait, I'll wait.
So for now, we're okay with the state definition for duplex, and we're going to look into the fire safety aspects of that state somewhere. Because I just had the same question about multi-units. With the state definition is "A building that contains three or four, three or more dwelling units in the same building." And Reading's current definition is "A dwelling unit with independent living quarters for more than two families." And then it says about the ground floor access and the party walls, so... Is it, are you okay with the state definition on multi-unit as well?
I'd go with the state definition with more work on the concern about fire safety.
Okay.
There are so many what-ifs with that, though. I think, you know, you could just split hair, you know, constantly to narrow down on that and never cover all of the points. And then we get into this big, long, lengthy, you know, conditional use, and... So I think we should just refer in the language to the fire safety, and then for that particular property, then they can dive in and get the proper permission.
As with water and wastewater, I mean, you have to have those.
Right.
But there's a big difference between the multi-family and the duplex, and that multi-families have to have town water and sewers. Duplex does not.
It doesn't?
That's in, that's in that new state document.
It did say that.
The news, yeah, the new state document says that if you have water in sewer, you have to allow multi-family water. It doesn't say that multi-families have to have public water and sewer. You couldn't have...
One that I read does, yeah. I don't know.
So if you have more than two, if you have three, three units, so if you have a triplex, or, you know, just conversation purposes, you would not be able to, you could not have a septic system?
Correct.
That's not my...
Or well, it has to be supplied with water.
That's not my understanding of the new law, but I'll...
I didn't read that. You read it?
On the LCT, that's, they were going through it saying, "If you're on town with the city water, you can't do the multi." So that's how I heard it. Not for the duplex, the duplex is different, but if it was a multi, I understood it as you had to be on town with sewer water.
Sewer water?
Well, that would need to clarify.
I could be wrong, but that's how I heard it.
I think it's the other way around. If you have public water and sewer, you have to allow...
Benching, maybe.
But, yeah, we'll look into that.
So in Reading, because we don't have sewer, public sewer and water, a triplex could never be approved?
Just in village.
Oh, in the village? But gee, there's no public sewer and water in the village?
There's public water here, correct?
I think there's some sharing of wells. Kevin, isn't that right? There's some sharing of wells in the village?
Yeah, there's about 70 residents and businesses, and many of them have shared wells and outdated septic. Now, I don't want to go into a bunch of it, but there needs to be a discussion by the planning commission of the survey, the water survey that went out to the village at some point. Maybe that could be put on an agenda item.
Won't that survey become acknowledged once it's concluded?
Yeah, it should be. It's kind of a boilerplate survey. If they don't map every conduit, every well, every old well, every surface water conduit, and some of the hydrology of the area, and we're missing out on something.
But aren't they also having a problem with the people in the village to answer the survey?
Oh, you can bet on that. If you get 17% return on the survey, that's considered okay. But, as you know, to get something done, you have to have just about everybody on board, because it's costing dollars a lot.
And you think that the people in the village are not interested in...
Oh, there's a lot of interest, yeah.
But why aren't they answering the survey?
I don't know what the survey response is right now. I can't answer that. It may be well above what is generally expected, which would be very nice. But in terms of the efforts by the Energy Board to get water testing done, that was somewhat of an indication of interest. There were free water sample bottles in the town hall for a while.
Good. I also have been speaking to a lot of my neighbors, and they're all kind of, I don't know, upset is the word, but curious about...
but curious about why everyone in the whole town hasn't been able to answer that survey. I know it will affect the people just in the town of Feltville, but perhaps like down the road, it would affect everyone as far as taxes, et cetera, et cetera.
That's a very legitimate question. And I'm on board with that type of thought. Why not have input from as many people in town as you can get?
Some of the questions that are on the survey, I believe, are specific to the sites.
Right.
For instance, if you live on Town Hill, do you, the response to when you put your septic system in, how you water testing has no effect on putting the water and sewer system in the village?
Right, but...
But those are the questions that are on the survey.
But there are no other questions on the survey?
It's mostly about when and how, and the condition of it.
How old is your system?
How old is it?
Well, is it a mountain system? Is it a dry rail?
And so, what people on Bailey's Mills or Town Hill have to say about it, for your system, has no impact on what they're trying to do here?
Right, I understand that. However, like, my neighbors and I, and my husband and I, have formed a sort of group that could potentially deal with revitalization of the town of Feltville.
Okay.
And it would be pertinent, like if something, say, what trouble was going to be purchased, to have input from, like for the future, of, you know, something that might happen in the town.
Well, they could, they could get the survey and not fill it out and just make comments. I mean, it's right, it's right to focus on the village itself. The village center, a designation by the state, is somewhat of a powerful tool, isn't it, Martha?
Yes, and there's usually, when they do these studies, there's usually a public presentation where they talk about, you know, what they found in the survey, and they do ask for input, so you could certainly say something available.
I feel that the survey should, you know, be widely distributed, but filled out by, you know, the people in the village where this will happen. And then other input can be put in, don't you think?
Yeah, and they will make some assumptions. They're not going to assume that the current uses are, that's all that's going to happen. They'll probably make some, like, what if you converted every single family home to a duplex? And what if you, you know, they'll make some assumptions so they're not just looking at your current needs with an empty lot or a store not being used or something like that.
So we have, we have to answer that question, I think, for the public about the, if the Act 47, if I'm correct, right? Act 47 allows for more than a duplex on a septic system and water, well water? Because your understanding it one way and their understanding it another.
Right. They actually say if you have public water and sewer...
You have to allow it.
You have to allow a three or four unit multi...
But we don't.
Right, but you don't have either right now. And if you do get a sewer, you'll still just have the sewer, not the water, so... So it's, it's not going to be required in Reading anytime soon. Under number three... Sorry, keep switching.
Sorry.
So, just to go back a minute, make sure I understood. You're okay with the multi-states, multi-family definition provided that we look into this sewer issue?
Yes.
The other reason, Steve had said he thought you ought to stick with, I had originally suggested that you have two different categories, three and four unit, multi-family and five or more unit. It's not that, again, with no water and sewer, it's not that big a deal. The only thing that it could make a little bit easier, one of the changes in Act 47 was they changed the definition of development with regard to Act 250. So what used to be the 5-5-10 rule, 10-5-5, I can't remember which order they put it in, but you can only develop 10 properties within five miles in a five-year period, which was very, was constraining the ability of contractors to build new housing. So they temporarily changed that to 25-5-5. And in addition to that, they changed, they said that if you convert an existing building to a three or four unit dwelling, that only counts as one of the 25 units that you're allowed to go within five miles, within five years. So if Reading, in the village anyway, allowed three or four units as a permitted use, and the developer is interested in doing that, and they had adequate water and sewer, which is a lot of ifs, so... It's not that big a concern right now. By the time you, I mean, this temporary definition for development, it's only for three years, and it'll be at least three years before you've had a sewer system
Oh, yeah, at least.
So it's probably a new point, if you want to keep it as a conditional use and three or more, I think that's fine. That was a long way to go. And then accessory dwellings, I sent out some new language. I gotta switch again. So I put on the screen your existing definitions. You had, you had it so defined, attached accessory apartment, detached accessory apartment, separate. Other than one being attached and one being detached, there really aren't a whole lot of definite, oh, differences. And the state's definition, which is below our, their Act 47 definition, my suggestion is that you change the name from apartment to accessory dwelling unit and just combine the attached and detached. And there's language, I just wanted to do definitions first, and then there's language standards and stuff we can go over. I did change the state language a tiny bit to specify attached and detached.
To reference the old...
To reference the old ones. Right, it doesn't change the meaning. I don't think that anyone would object to that at the state level. And you're allowed to be less strict, and Reading is less strict, than the 30% and the 900 square feet. You're already at 40% and 1,000 square feet, so I changed that. And your preference is the term living space to habitable floor area, so we changed that. Other than that, that's the state definition.
I like it.
I think it makes sense.
So is that accessory dwelling unit A, is that under section 4.1? Would that be 4A there?
Accessory dwelling unit, a distinct unit, that's, V A is part of the definition.
Oh, okay, alright.
Oh, V A and B below the property is sufficient wastewater, is that...
He's going to, he's moving to your next page, Martha.
Oh, okay, alright.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Okay, so that definition is okay, you can...
Is you okay with me?
Okay, so... Alright, so now I'm caught up with you. So as I said, below, this is your old language where you had it attached and detached separately. I combined them and incorporated them with the new recommendations or, well, requirements in Act 47. So I, can everyone read it? Would you like to hear it?
I'm just thinking, on the old one, there was some stuff about parking, and I don't see that in these.
I think the state removed that. The state definition used to say something about wastewater, something about parking, and... There were three things. Oh, the 900 square feet and the 30%.
Take a look on those.
They took parking out of their definition.
Do we need to take it out of us and do we need to have that?
I think anything you do that's really more strict than what the state requires or allows, you can be less strict.
Is that detrimental to increasing housing?
Yeah, and Act 47 also has some parking provisions, which maybe we'll get into next time, but... In, in places where you have both water and sewer, you can only require one parking space per dwelling. If, since you don't, you can require one and a half. And that'll be in the parking section, and, you know, that'll still apply even though it's not spelled out. I mean, I can double-check and see if they're gonna get upset if you put parking in.
Who would agree with that language, Martha? A, 1 through 6?
You're okay with that?
Yeah, I am too. So this would summarize our 4.1 and 4.12?
Um, yes.
Yes.
And it has some new things in there as well.
And this is, your C here is fire safety, so you've addressed that, which is great.
Right, right. And if, yeah. So B and C also okay, or...
Good job, looks good job today.
Okay, well, that was easier than I thought it was going to be. Since it does reference owner-occupied, and I think we talked about having a definition for owner-occupied, so here's one possibility on the screen. Used as the primary residence of the person owning title to the property who must inhabit the residence more than 50% of the year and must be eligible to declare the property as a homestead for Vermont property tax purposes.
What's the definition of property as a homestead? I'm wondering if somebody can declare property as a homestead if they're only there 50% of the time?
I think it's, it's 50% at less a day. You have to be there to declare, but basically...
So is that the definition of a resident?
That's the definition of owner-occupied.
What? How, how do we ever possibly inspect, enforce that? And who would do it?
Well, probably it would happen at the time of the application.
I mean, I know of rental properties right now that I just drove by one that there's three cars from outstate back in front of it, and the owner never lives there.
Right, right.
So who's going to do something about it?
You may have situations that are grandfathered.
No, this is, this is a relatively new purchase. This place was only purchased within the last three years.
Well, I mean, now we're going back to, you know, policing, and, you know, that's always tricky. How do we not know that those two other cars without state plates aren't just guests? You think they live there?
No, truly don't live there.
So it could be someone having friends over from out of town?
Possible. It's the same place.
Well, why did you just ask him? Are you a resident or are you non-resident?
It probably wouldn't come into play unless it was an issue, you know, where there was a place that was being, you know, parties all the time, and the owner was never around, and people weren't...
This is the same place that has a dog problem, catching a snotty about the class meeting.
So because I can't see the draft, just wondering, is there a reason why we're differentiating with accessory dwellings about having it be necessarily owner-occupied? Yeah, what's the difference? I understand that...
So for clarification, because I'm a little foggy on this too. So our current language requires owner-occupied?
What we were just looking at...
Or we're looking at a new idea? Because if it's a new idea, I agree with you completely. Why are we doing it?
What we were just looking at was A1, shall be considered a permitted use in all districts provided that it conforms with all of the following. The accessory dwelling is located within or pertinent to a single-family dwelling on an owner-occupied lot.
So is that new language or is that existing language?
That is... Yeah, no, that's, that's, it was that way before. An attached accessory apartment shall be within or attached to an owner-occupied, primary, single-family residence and may share a common entrance with it. If you say that the lot is owner-occupied rather than the dwelling, then the owner can occupy either the accessory dwelling or the house, which can work out, you know, if you've got a big family and they want, and their mom or dad is in the accessory dwelling unit, and then, or you've got a big family and all the kids grow up and they're temporarily occupying the smaller unit, and then they get married and have a family and they switch, you know, I mean, it's just, it's nice to have the flexibility that the owner can occupy either of the structures. But if you don't require the owner to occupy either structure, that's when you can get into some tricky situations with short-term rentals, you know, where both are rented out. Nobody's kind of, no one has, no one's invested in making sure that it doesn't just become a party house or whatever. I mean, a lot of other towns have had issues with that.
So is the idea, not knowing when this was written, is the idea that an accessory dwelling was given as a privilege because it was connected to a main house and it was owned... and it was owner occupied? That an accessory dwelling is just simply a privilege, it's not a right to have if you don't, you know, if you just own the home and then you have a detached apartment? That you can't have, you can't have both if you're not, if the owner is not occupying it?
It's, you're allowed to require owner occupancy.
But the state does not require that?
I don't believe you have to require.
Okay, so that's key, that's key.
Yeah.
So, I... And I think, you know, this is where we need to keep a really open mind when we're thinking about planning for affordable housing. You, if an owner, like in this instance, I believe we could all consider that in affordable housing. I think they're asking like, what, twelve hundred dollars a month for a housing? Thousand dollars a month for that apartment above keepers or what used to be keepers? And that's affordable housing. So if we said, "No, he can't do that," then we just nixed one affordable housing unit.
Or will you do a lot of mixed-use housing, which is commercial residential public? I don't know if it's in that district, I think it is.
Yes, that's like a commercial or...
Right, so that's another, that's another separate, um...
Conversation.
Section of the bylaws where that is also allowed.
Okay.
Yeah. That would be different. I mean, the state, the state's basically said anyone who has a single-family home can have an accessory dwelling in it. That's, you can't prevent that, that's...
But the state, to clarify, the state doesn't require it to be owner occupied?
I'm pretty sure they do not require it to be owner occupied. They allow you to require it to be owner occupied. And this, the way this is worded is, shall be considered a permitted use in all districts. Now, you can say, allow it as a conditional use to not be owner occupied, if you want. I mean, that's another option. And if you...
But then you'd have to ask for a variance and have a hearing and...
Well, if it was allowed as a conditional use, you wouldn't need a variance, but you would have that here.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So it makes sense to keep it as a permitted?
I would say, keep it as a permitted and give it to the owner occupied and align ourselves with the state.
Well, as I said, I'll, I'll bring the language next time. There's two different sections of the Act forty-seven.
And I think at the time, you felt strongly that we wanted it to be an owner on site, um, to be owner occupied?
Right, I mean, I remember some conversation about that, that's why I ended it.
Yeah, and that's on the lot, it's not in the building.
And it's, it's the way it's worded in your current regulations. And again, you know, you've got another year and a half to work on this, so...
Yeah.
Nothing that you do today has to be necessarily written in stone. Until you're ready to send it to the select board for their approval, you can, you can come back to it. So, there's kind of a question mark that may be about the owner occupancy. Yes?
Yes.
If you did require owner occupancy, do you want to have a definition of it? And is this a definition that would work? Or do you just, you want to just table that?
Yeah, I think some more thought needs to be put into this because now that I'm reading this more carefully, it's lumping in short-term rentals, it's, there's a lot of conditions that I wouldn't agree with.
Isn't the purpose of it so that people from wherever, like in Manhattan where a lot of Chinese nationals buy all these apartment buildings and just renting them out, but not occupying, so they're absentee members? Isn't it the same idea as, as this?
Well, you're talking about New York City and you're speaking about regular...
No, I, I know, it's the same idea where people from elsewhere will come in and buy up a lot of properties.
But don't you think from a planning point of view, it's a really good idea to have investors come in and create affordable housing to, to, to...
If that's what they do, if that's what they're doing.
It would be, and it would be for long-term rentals and not simply, uh, December, January, and February for ski season. And knocking somebody who wants to work at Dartmouth Hitchcock Hospital out of a year-round rental place for years to come.
It's a tough subject to try and...
Yeah, yeah, but I think that a lot of the short-term stuff knocks out the long-term housing for people who are working, who are now turning down jobs. It was on the news the other night. The, the people at the hospitals and, and whatnot who are turning down jobs, they want to come to Vermont, they want that job, they can't find any place to live.
But on the flip side of that, if people are buying properties and they're fixing them up, just like this example, the keeper's property, we all know they're just falling down before anyone to fix it up. Wrist, wrist, I think it's called. Really nice place now. So if people are gonna come and buy, I mean, and rent them out to people, people can't afford to get mortgages now, they can't afford to buy a house, but maybe they could afford to pay a thousand dollars a month, so that's helping with the affordable housing prices. So I don't see why it's so bad to have people rent out their properties if people can't afford to buy a house anyway.
If they rent them out?
And that's what we're saying, yeah, rent them out, but rent them out for years or months, not, not just simply ski season or for the riding season at GMHA, but for somebody to, who wants to live here, not somebody who wants to come play.
Well, I think in a lot of towns, it's an issue. Like Stowe, when I was doing my BLCT training, you know, Stowe's, um, select board was on there and he had a very good reason and a list of other reasons that said, "We're doing the short-term rental regulation because of this, 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 and this." And if we start regulating things, and it's one of the largest warnings in my BLC training, was you can't start regulating something without reasons being. Can we prove that there are short-term rentals existing or seasonal rentals existing that are taking properties that are affordable away from people who need them? And I don't know of one in Redding that is a short-term rental that's taking affordable housing away from someone who needs it. That's the question. So if we start getting into regulating these things when we don't have reasons, we're going to get challenged or we're going to get sued.
But don't you find it like very frustrating when you need somebody to work on your property and there's nobody around to do it because nobody's here?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Every day.
Absolutely, every day.
Right, so that's what I'm saying, there's gotta be a balance. So there does have to be some regulation to create a balance. That's what all I'm saying.
But like Braystone, it's, they're asking, it's for sale, they're asking one point three million dollars. That's a...
Great, oh, Braystone, yeah. But keepers is...
Right, they're, as a human property, one point three million dollars is a lot of money, so that's, it's for sale. So if somebody wants to come and buy it, but it's not affordable, but yet if someone wants rent for a month or two months and then help with the economy and help around, I don't see what, with the downside of that is. Because somebody can come by it right now if they want to, but it's expensive. And they're not gonna lower the price because of anything else.
Well, one or two months is like a transient population.
But, but I, I think the town is going to have to aggressively partner with a nonprofit if there's going to be some sort of multi-dwelling building that is going to have programs that, that it's deep restricted, that it is income-based. You have to make it X amount of percent of the adjusted monthly income in order to qualify. And that's going to get the people that are in the, in the workforce, that's what's going to get people, uh, there that are going to be filling these jobs. It's not going to be a home that is a home up the street right here on the road, sold for three hundred and fifteen thousand. It's literally on the road. That's, that's not going to be affordable for somebody in, in a, in a blue-collar job or even a comfortable middle-class family job, so...
And what is affordable, if you don't mind me injecting this, what is affordable, like the little white house that's tucked in the, as you go up the hill out of town here? Somebody bought that for what, ninety thousand dollars? That's affordable. But they're going to have to probably put another hundred and fifty thousand dollars into it to make it livable. That's not affordable.
Right.
And it might be worth while looking at some of the town-owned property that we do have as a way of developing that for, for real affordable housing. We, 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 the town should not be in the business of owning large amounts of land that we virtually get nothing for. And that could be a real opportunity for workforce housing.
And if somebody was coming or renting, buying everything and then turning them into short-term rentals, I'd be like, okay, maybe there's something going on, but that's not happens, I mean, it's just not.
Because they need a balance.
Yes, I heard.
I mean, right now with the water and sewer, you can't really build a, you know, twenty-unit apartment building.
So we're going back to the beginning of, here we are, people that don't live in the town, but we want to do something, so we should be partnered with that survey.
Right, I mean, the, the goal for the state was just to enable more housing. And in Redding, really, the accessory dwelling units and the duplexes are the only things that have any real potential. So for now, until there's more, you know, water, sewer, public water.
And I believe Gene, several months ago in one of the meetings, had proposed speaking to people in the village who had large enough houses to where they could create an accessory dwelling. That conversation never went anywhere, but if there are people in, who are in that situation who could create an accessory dwelling unit within their house or on their property, they likely don't have the resources to do that. So there would have to be some sort of a program in place to help them fund it. And then, then, you know, you create studio apartment or, you know, a, a, you know...
Woodstock did that.
Well, yeah, Woodstock's completely...
No, but they offered it in Redding also. Ten thousand dollars to anybody that would turn part of their building into an accessory apartment.
We did that in Redding?
What?
In Woodstock, not Redding.
In Redding and in South Woodstock and Woodstock. They encompass this whole area.
Who's offering that?
I think it was the town for people that would work in Woodstock.
EDC Economic Development Corporation.
The EDC.
There are state grants?
State grants, specifically what they're for, I'd have to look into that.
Well, that I think would be very worthwhile, you know. If, if someone knows those resources and they don't have the wherewithal to, to, you know, go after it themselves, it would be great if someone in this committee or the committee could approach them, as Gene had suggested several months ago, and let them know that there is a grant to do that. And then, you know, that could be three, four, five affordable housing goals. So we stop focusing on STRs and over owner-occupied properties and we focus on that. That would be energy well spent.
I think you have to focus on all three.
What?
You have to focus on all of it, not just one, forget the SDRs.
Well, economically, it's more attractive to make STRs, uh, than it is to make affordable housing.
Well, not necessarily, Kevin, I, I somewhat agree with you, but it's, it's more money, but it's not necessarily the best quality of life, so...
So you want to table for now this, this topic?
I think so, and I think we'll have to see what we can find about the grants because I've heard something about grants for adding accessory buildings also. I just, I'm not sure where I saw it right now.
Yeah, I'll, I'll look.
I think it was in the standard, Vermont standard, in Woodstock, as Jane mentioned.
It's the Woodstock Economic Development Corporation?
Woodstock Economic Development.
Yeah, they're in EDC, I think they're the ones giving out the, the grants.
Well, I'll explore that.
So for the ten acre district... You had a purpose statement that said, "The purpose of the RR ten district is to limit growth on certain undeveloped lands in Redding, which because of their size and resource value are better suited for forestry, wildlife management, and other similar low-intensity uses." And that definition was the same as the RC twenty-five district. So, uh... Steve had suggested another definition. "The purpose of the RR ten dis- district is to allow low-density development on land serviced by public roads that still have significant value for forestry and wildlife management." And Kathy had asked for some additional possible definitions.
Which were horrible. And more convoluted than anything, so I'll, I'll vote for that one right now.
Well, I gathered something from other towns. Uh, I don't know anyone like them, Kathy didn't like them. I don't know.
These, these from Weatherfield and...
Weatherfield, Manchester.
Yeah.
No, I don't get it. Manchester Stockbridge, East Barn. Now, they're just all very different than we are in Redding. And I think maybe for future, Martha and, and the committee, we should have printed copies of this material to give to the audience. The people at whom can see this very clearly, but they're in the dark over there.
Yeah.
Again, I'm even having a hard time following some of his points.
Yeah, so, I mean, we can table this as well, if you want to think about it.
Which item is that on Steve's list?
That is item eight.
Is there anybody who thought that one of those was any better than what we have now?
No. What you have currently is the same as your twenty-five acre district, so that...
No, well, the one that Steve suggested that.
Yes. I, I might tweak that a little bit just because of the word order makes it sound like the public roads have significant value, um, so...
But I think that's the, it, it makes it different from the twenty-five, but it's not what Manchester and Stockbridge have, so...
Right, okay. If you want, I'll tweak this so that...
Yeah, put it in a different order?
Right, yeah, just to keep the key in the same...
Yeah. Sounds like a plan.
And... The next one's pretty easy.
And then we discussed that at one of the meetings, or they, I think it was prior to my being on the committee.
Yeah, everyone approved this language, the water and wastewater language. And then Steve had just suggested that we make it really clear that it includes seasonal camps. So I just added those four words that are highlighted in yellow. For all uses required, legal under state on-site sewage disposal regulations, including seasonal camps. A state wastewater system and portable water supply permit must be obtained by the applicant prior to the commencement of construction of any structures or the initiation of any use associated with the water, with water and water supply. use associated with the water, wastewater, or..."
Now, a question about seasonal camps. Now, does the state approve outhouses? They used to.
Well, you could get very complicated. The state defines primitive camps as structures and as needing wastewater, a wastewater or potable water supply permit. And then they describe remote huts with no water or sewer as not requiring a permit.
A remote hut?
Yes, that's how they worded.
Gosh, a hovel.
Yeah, you know, way off in the woods, there's, there's some kind of shelter that has no water or sewer, I guess that would be fine, no permit necessary.
Okay, thank you.
But by referencing the, the water wastewater system, it's really up to the applicant to contact the state and say, "Here's what I'm doing, do I need a permit?"
If they're going to add or build on or change the existing...
Well, if they're gonna... If they're gonna, right, if they're gonna build...
So if they leave the hut, they'll be okay?
But if there's a hut out in the woods with no water or sewer, that the state doesn't care about that. But once you add water and sewer, they do care about it. So this tweak is okay with section 311? All base businesses, 4.9. If it's getting late and you want to, I don't know much more, you have to do, Kathy?
We have a few more things. What, how, 4.9's only a little one, right?
It could be.
Let's just take a look at it and then if we decide it gets too in the weeds, we can clean up for the next time.
So I had suggested some changes in Steve's handout, number 14. He had suggested some based on what I had suggested, changed it a little bit. So what's in here is mostly his suggestion. The thing that I've highlighted there in purple, except for outdoor parking, et cetera, I would cross that out because you're dealing with parking below on number four, and I don't need, I don't think you'd need it in both places. I think you could add the word "business" to the list in number four, provide out-street parking for all business, resident, customer, and employee vehicles.
So Martha, I don't know, I didn't get that from...
I just was working on it today.
Oh, you were, oh, okay, so none of us have seen it?
Right, correct. So if you want to look at it and you have any questions, but otherwise, we can just, I can send it to you if you can...
You'll send it, okay. Good, well, I don't think we can have any discussion on it if we haven't seen it.
Yeah, okay, I'll just send it and we can look at it next time.
Okay.
The only other thing on Steve's list which I think would be a good thing is the definition of nursery on number 16.
And that's in the glossary?
I'm not sure whether I added it or not, yeah. But it was listed as released and there was no definition, so this is an option. "Nursery means all lands, premises, and buildings on or in which nursery stock is grown, transported, or offered for sale. Nurseries are subject to regulation by the Agency of Agriculture in accordance with 6 PSA Chapter 206." I like that part.
Um, yeah, I'm wondering about the nursery thing myself. I'll look at that. Uh, you know, the, the Agency of Agriculture sends out a, an egg census if you go into any relief for flood damage through the Farm Service Agency or any of the USDA agencies. How do I think about that?
Okay. So we can table that also, and that's all I have for...
Yeah, again, I didn't see that language, that proposed language.
Right. That is the, that's the number 16, that is, yeah. But I'll, I'll...
I think a definition like that is, is good to have in there, but you just keep me interested with a couple of other things.
I'll try to send maybe one document with everything.
That would be great.
Maybe even have it in the, in the right order. So, but that's it for now.
That's it. Moving on to number six, new business. And as you know, we were put back to a five-member board. Steve was done as of the last meeting. He forwarded everybody a letter of interest and...
Is, is Steve done, done, finished?
Yes.
Okay.
That Mark Corbin has shown some interest in wanting to be on the Planning Commission. He sent a, sort of a letter of interest, which I circulated to everyone. And I would like some feedback or any questions, Maxia to answer any questions that anybody might have about his application. He certainly has been active at Planning Commission meetings for almost two years, I think. And I, for one, think that he would be a really good candidate to fill the vacancy and get us up to our five-member board. So I'll entertain any questions? Kevin, questions?
Yeah, I think there's probably a consensus by the Planning Commission, if I'm not speaking for anybody on the Planning Commission, that we need a, a member who has a, a good language and speaks the truth. And I would say that Kirk is on board with that as well.
Yes, he indicated that to me also.
So the Planning Commission should recommend to the Select Board...
Okay, can you put that in the form of a motion? Kevin?
I make a motion that the Planning Commission, if I'm not speaking for anybody else on board...
No.
...makes a recommendation that Mark Corbin become a member of the Planning Commission and zoning board adjustment.
And I will second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
So it's unanimous from three?
I would, I would also add that we should probably recognize Steve's service somehow.
I would like to do that also, and I'm just puzzled how we can do that. I don't know, 35 years is a long time for no recognition.
Well, it was nicely good for Jim Poplaw.
Um, yeah, I don't know if Steve would...
Be part of that.
Yeah, yeah, he's sort of more of a private kind of guy. And I was thinking, even if we just did some kind of a gift certificate or something, and I think I'm going to have to talk to Calista to see where they got the fundings. I don't think we have any party of recognition funds in the budget, but there must be something on a line there somewhere where we could get some kind of a plaque or a piece or, you know, a gift certificate for him and his wife to go out to eat someplace? Something.
That'd be nice.
Very nice.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, just to recognize, I'm not saying I always agreed with Steve, but it was good to have him on board.
Yes, and he was, nobody, I don't think, knows the regulations more inside out than he did.
Absolutely.
And we attend meetings.
Yeah. Um, so I should go ahead, do we want to think about even tonight, what would be appropriate? Anybody? No?
Well, I think, I don't know, plaque, recognition plaque.
Uh, I'd think a nice dinner.
And a dinner.
Cooked out in plaques before and then...
I've got a bunch of them from the Department of Defense, yeah. No, I don't need any more plaques.
Who wants another trophy?
Yeah. Let's, yeah, let's, I'll talk to her and see where we've got money that we can use to maybe...
Okay.
...go ahead and, and get something and maybe we can go whole hog and send him off to sign the piece.
Yeah, or, you know, I'm, I'm not sure if he visits state parks, but seasons passed at state parks, that's an idea.
He's old enough to get the one that's for free. Not need to pay for that.
Well, they're both teenagers, I believe, so...
Yeah, I know, but that's free. Um, okay, so we now need to plan for the September meeting, and we have an issue here. It was scheduled for September 4th. September 4th is the first Monday, which is also Labor Day. Martha will be gone from the 4th to the 8th. So if we want to have a meeting without Martha, we can schedule it, just not on the 4th. If we want to wait for Martha, she is also not available the 11th, the 19th, or the 27th. I have been summoned for jury duty beginning September 14th. I would like to have it before the 14th, because I don't know how often I'm going to have to go to White River or how involved this whole thing is with the jury duty thing. So that narrows it down to the 12th or the 13th if we want Martha to come. So I'm open for, what do you folks want to do? Do you want to have a meeting without Martha? Do you want to wait until the 12th or the 13th?
I think the 12th would be great, you know, Martha for the time, I, we should keep rolling along on this. So you're going to have to be gone in no time, and we need to make some progress.
And I'm working with the 12th and the 13th.
The 12th, Tuesday, the 12th?
12th.
Is that good for you, Martha?
Patrick?
Yeah, I'm looking right now.
Okay.
We do have, yeah, we'll make that work, Tuesday, 12th.
Tuesday, the 12th?
Yep.
It's a Select Board meeting on, what, the 11th, correct?
Are they meeting on the 1st of the 2nd, Tuesday? I have the 1st, no, the 2nd, it is the 2nd, isn't it? Because the, the 1st would be the 1st.
Second Tuesday.
So then we're...
Or second Monday.
They've been meeting on Monday.
Yeah, second Mondays.
They're meeting next Monday.
Right.
Select Board meets next Monday. So then they would meet the 2nd Monday, which would be the 11th?
Um, of, no, um, yes.
Of September, right? Hey, maybe we can leave the equipment all up.
There's an idea.
That would be good, huh? At 7:00? So we've got our next meeting, which would be September 12, 10th. Other business?
Um, I just want to go back, when, when it's discussed with the Select Board, will it be mentioned about the statute regarding the majority of a planning commission or governing body shall, will be, the major, the word majority is in there, shall be rested?
They already have that information.
All right, thank you. That's in the letter, right?
Yeah, Mark referenced it.
Yeah, Mark put it in at the bottom of his letter. Public comment? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
Nice talking.
So the meeting is adjourned at 8:30?